Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to night four of the 2022 annual town meeting. I'm Bob Gis, I'm your town moderator. I've been informed by the town clerk that we have quorum. Thank you for showing up on time. Why don't we get started? So we left off, I know we hopped around a lot, we left off with Article 21, I think it was on, I forgot, Tuesday last week, and with that, we would normally go to 22, that was passed by the consent agenda. So we'll pick up with Article 23. Recommended that the sum of 625,00134 be appropriated for the purposes set forth in this article. That to meet said appropriation, the treasurer be authorized to issue with the approval of the select board bonds or secured notes the amount of 625,00134. And that the town vote to accept grants under the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 90, the amount of 625,134. Said reimbursements from the state 100% to be restored upon their receipt to the town treasurer. This will require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to Article 23 in this recommendation? I see no hands raised, with that we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstained. Please remember to click submit. If we can unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, we can mute. Five more seconds, we good? Okay, we can put up the results. I declare a two-thirds vote with 158 yes at 98%, 2 no's at 1% and 2 abstains at 1%. Thank you, we'll go to Article 24. Recommended that the sum of 596,700 be appropriate for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement or enhancement of the town's water system, including costs incidental related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow 596,700 dollars under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8.5 of the general laws as amended. Or any other enabling authority into issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon sale of any bonds or notes they are under. Unless any such premium applied to the payment of costs. The issuance of subs, bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs, the amount borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premiums so applied. And that the select board and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriations, one or more grants or gifts from the Mass Water Resources Authority or any other public or private funding source. This will require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article or recommendation? I see none, we can put up the poll, please. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstained. And remember to click submit, if we can unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We can close the polls. Pardon me, mute the phones. Okay, I declare a two-thirds vote with 171 yeses at 99%, 1 no at 1% and 1 abstained at 1%. With that, we'll go to Article 25. Recommended that the sum of 320,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement or enhancement of the town's stormwater system, including costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow 320,000 dollars under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7.1 and 8.15 of the general laws as amended. Or any other enabling authority into issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes they're under, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs. And the amount borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied. And that the select board by be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source. This also requires a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion or recommendation? Article or recommendation. I see no hands, we can go to the vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstained. We can unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We can mute. I declare a two-thirds vote with 176 yeses, 99 at 99%, 2 no's at 1% and 0 abstentions at 0%. Thank you, we will proceed to number 26. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate, to provide capital needs for the town sewer system. Including costs incidental and related thereto, and to authorize a select board on behalf of the town to apply for new federal funds, pardon me, federal, state, MWRA or other funds for this purpose. To see how such appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing under applicable provisions by law, pardon me, of law, or otherwise in fact on relating anything there too. Warrant committee recommended that no appropriation be made, so I'd like to recognize Mr. George Asher, the warrant committee, to explain the recommendation. Mr. Asher, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. The warrant committee was was working on the recommendation of the Director of Public Works. That there was effectively nothing really to be done and required no action on this warrant article.
Thank you. I see one hand raised. Mr. Mullin, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Peter Mullin, Precinct 2. Wonder if we can hear from the Director of the DPW why there's no recommendation for any funds for capital needs of the sewer department?
Yes, happy to. Mr. Doyle, I recognize you and threw you to Mr. Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Berkeley, Director of Public Works, is available to be recognized to address the question on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So this is a habitual article that we typically submit every year that authorizes the borrowing from the MWRAs, INI, which is inflow and infiltration, available funds. So we've exhausted all of our available funding through MWRA, so there was no more money left to authorize this fiscal year. So that's the reason that there's no appropriation being recommended. We have been able to use other funds available through the American Rescue Plan Act to bridge the gap until MWA, a next phase of MWA money becomes available.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. Mr. Mullin, is that satisfactory?
Fine, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any others want to speak to this article or recommendation? I see no other hands. Very good, with that we will proceed to a vote, this just requires a majority vote. We can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstained. If we can unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We can mute the phones. You good with the poll? Let's trigger one in, okay? Okay, I think we've had 30 seconds. The motion carries with a majority vote, 150 yeses at 82%, 25 no's at 14% and 8 abstentions at 4%. With that, we'll proceed to number, Article number 27. Recommended that the town vote to accept Woodlot Drive as a public way and any pertinent easements thereto, as laid out and as shown, a plan entitled As-Built Plans Milton Woods dated November 1821, prepared by Marchy Honda and Associates, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain or otherwise the fee interest or easements in any land necessary for laying out and acceptance of Woodlot Drive. In any pertinent drainage utility or other easements related to said Woodlot Drive and/or to accept grants thereof. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide for the purposes of this article. And further to authorize a select board and other applicable town and milton boards and personnel to take all related actions necessary appropriate to accomplish the purpose of this article. Meaning and intending to accept the remainder of Woodlot Drive such that the entirety of this named road is accepted by the town as a public way. This will require a two-thirds vote. We do have some citizens that have asked permission in advance to speak and been granted by the moderator as and approved by the town clerk as active registered voters. I'll start with any town meeting members. Does any town meeting members wish to speak to this article or recommendation? Otherwise, I'll go to the citizens. I see none. With that, I'll first recognize ma'am, if you're on the phone, we have two, Ms. Maggie Wilson and Mr. Josh Pompolus, if I'm pronouncing it correctly. Ms. Wilson, I see your hand, you're recognized ma'am. And you have up to 10 minutes to speak or ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. This is Maggie Wilson, Precinct 9. I am my neighbor, as you mentioned, Josh Pompolus is on the call as well. Josh and I are the Milton Woods HOA Board of Directors.
And ma'am, just a question, you're elected town meeting member, is that right?
No, I'm not a town meeting member.
You're not, then could you state your address for the audience?
Sure, 21 Woodlot Drive in Milton.
Very much, please proceed.
So we are the Milton Woods HOA Board of Directors and we're representing the other residents of Woodlot Drive on this call. Over the past several years, our homes on Woodlot Drive have been completed and 23 families have moved in. Construction is done and we've all settled down into our community. Some of us are new to Milton, others of us have moved from previous Milton homes. We have children in our neighborhood that attend each of the Milton schools. We are active participants in the town and are all thrilled to be part of the community. The last step from our perspective is to turn our road over to the town of Milton and convert it from a private way to a public road. When each of us purchased our homes from Pulte, the developer, we were told that our road would eventually be turned over to the town once the construction was complete. And everything was in order and we, from our understanding, there there was already approval in the special permit that was a part of the permitting process with Pulte in the town. And it is each of the homeowners' understanding and wish that our road become a public road. And again, we're thrilled to be part of the community and we're respectfully requesting the town accept our road, Woodlot Drive, as a town road. Thank you.
Welcome to Milton, ma'am.
Thank you.
Pompolus, are you on the phone?
I thought he was, but maybe he might not be.
Mr. Pompolus, we see you in the panelist, if.
I am now, can you hear?
There you are, we can hear you now. Yes, sir, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, members of the Milton Town Meeting. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, members of the Milton Town Meeting. I pretty much second Maggie Wilson's comments. And I should say, accepting Woodlot Drive as a public ward will fulfill what was promised to us as potential buyers and officially close the deal. I wouldn't add anymore to what you already said.
Thank you, sir. The members appreciate your brevity. With that, I see no other hands from town meeting members and no other citizens requested permission to speak. This does require a two-thirds vote, so we'll go to the vote. We can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
I should make up my mind between yes and aye, shouldn't I? I will do that. And all opposed, please vote no. Thank you. We can mute the phones. So I declare a two-thirds vote at 172 yeses at 89%, 19 nos at 10% and two abstentions at 1%. Folks, you're wondering why weren't these in the consent agenda? It's because they require a two-thirds vote. My policy has been to keep the two-thirds vote articles out of the consent agenda. With that, we'll go to Article 28. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY23 Board of Health. Total Board of Health, $315,709, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $315,709 be raised in the tax levy. By prior agreement, Ms. Caroline Kinsella, Director of our Board of Health, asked for permission to speak. She has a couple announcements for us. Ms. Kinsella, are you there? Ms. Kinsella, are you there? Can we see her in the panel?
Yes. Yes, I'm here, Mr. Moderator.
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. I'm Caroline Kinsella, the Milton Public Health Director and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. I've been asked to give a quick COVID update and then share some exciting news from the Health Department. First, a COVID update. I'm happy to report that Milton's 14-day COVID-19% positivity has been decreasing from 9.46 to 8.7 and now this week, 8.3%. In the last two weeks, 1,543 COVID-19 tests were performed in the lab and out of those number, 123 tests were positive. The Omicron subvariant BA2, which is circulating now, is more transmissible but has predominantly milder symptoms. We're still listening to state calls every two weeks in the Health Department, and at this point, the state has not laid out any plans for the fall regarding COVID vaccinations, but we'll keep getting updates. I have some great news about the Milton Health Department. We've received $30,000 in funding to conduct a town-wide community health assessment and formulate a community health improvement plan, thanks to the efforts of Senator Walter Timmeltie in securing federal ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, funding for this project. The Milton Health Department has never before conducted a formal assessment to uncover what types of health challenges, service gaps, and health disparities exist in Milton, yet is best practice for local and state health departments as well as community hospitals. This process will allow us to collect information through stakeholder interviews, focus groups, and surveys. We will analyze existing statistical data collected by our partner and governmental organizations to help us better understand and address Milton's greatest health needs and identify those who may be at greatest risk. We have access to regional epidemiologists who will help us collect and analyze the findings, and this data will be used to inform the development of a strategic action plan, also referred to as a community health improvement plan, that will focus on addressing preventable illnesses and injuries, as well as the mental and behavioral health needs of adult and young residents. Ultimately, we hope that this process and data will hopefully bring new policies, procedures, and resources that will promote a healthier Milton. I'm also pleased to announce that the Board of Health unanimously voted to approve Milton resident Laurie Stillman as the project manager to oversee the design and implementation of the community health assessment and community health improvement plan and guide the team over the next six to nine months. Ms. Stillman has over 35 years of postgraduate experience managing public health organizations and community health improvement plans across New England. In addition to Ms. Stillman, our assessment team will consist of myself as director, Assistant Health Director Laura Delakai, and two regional epidemiologists. Our efforts will be coordinated with the Milton Coalition, which is a program of the Health Department, which focuses on addressing substance use and mental health among youth. The Milton Health Department is committed to ensuring that the assessment and strategic plan development will be a transparent, community-based participatory process. We're very excited that the Partnership for Healthy Milton, a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting a healthier Milton, will serve as the project's core community advisory group, leading the charge to reach out to local community and grassroots organizations, leaders and residents to assist us with a comprehensive, thoughtful, and respectful plan of action. Thank you for allowing me to make these announcements, and I hope that you'll take the time to complete our upcoming surveys coming up in the fall, which will provide us with insights, knowledge, and perspectives on how we can make Milton a healthier town to live in for all of us. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for your work on behalf of the citizens in our town. By the way, I saw a question come into the chat. If you have a question for Ms. Kinsella, just raise your hand and we'll address it. Meanwhile, I see only Mr. Funley has his hand raised. Mr. Funley, you're recognized.
Hello. Jay Funley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I'd like to, okay, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Musto on her election to the select board and ask, as it relates to this article, how is her seat on the Board of Health going to be filled? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Funley. If I can answer that.
Ms. Kinsella, you're recognized. Yes.
Thank you. So Roxanne Musto is on our board and she is going to continue to be on our board. She can run in our Board of Health and she can also be on the select board. So she can be on both of those boards. That answers your question, Mr. Funley. Thank you.
Mr. Funley, I see your hand is down, so I assume your question is answered. Okay. I see no other hands being raised. There's one. Ms. Julie Joyce, ma'am, you're recognized.
Hi, my name is Julie Joyce, 172 Adam Street, Milton. Can you hear me?
Yes, and precinct ma'am?
Hi, Precinct 6.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. I just had a question whether or not the participation on this is mandatory, and if so, is it mandatory for elementary and junior and high school students as well? Thank you.
Ms. Kinsella, you think you can answer that for us?
I'm sorry, can she repeat the question?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hi, okay, thank you. So I wanted to see if this participation in this is, is it optional? Is it mandatory? Will it include the the public schools, the private schools? Is it just 18 plus or who will this involve?
So I believe you're speaking about our community health assessment.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're going to be reaching out to all members in the town. So we will include the public schools. We're going to be reaching out to stakeholders, over 20 stakeholders in the town. We will be reaching out to public and private schools. We will be reaching out to the children. We also have the Milton Coalition, which is going to be focusing on youth, and they're actively involved in the youth in the schools. So absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands being raised. So Ms. Kinsella, if there's nothing else, thank you for joining us, and we will proceed to the vote.
Thank you. Mr. Mark.
If we can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. This is just a majority vote. We could unmute the phone. On the phone, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We can mute. The motion carries with a vote of 191 yeses at 96%, four nos at 2% and four abstains at 2%. Thank you. Article 29 is consent agenda. Article 30 is consent agenda. We'll proceed to Article 31. Recommend that the town vote pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 E1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws to establish a revolving fund in order to utilize rent and other money collected for the occupancy of the property at 211 Center Street for the purpose of maintaining and repairing said property, to authorize the Board of Cemetery Trustees to expend money from such a revolving fund and to limit to $40,000 the total amount, which may be expended annually from such revolving fund beginning in the fiscal year July 1, 2022, and to act on anything related thereto. This would require a two-thirds vote. If we could put the poll results down, please. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to Article 31? I see one hand on Ms. King. You're recognized.
I know that the property at 211 Center Street.
Ma'am, if you just, remember, introduce yourself in precinct.
Oh, I'm sorry. Virginia King, Precinct 3.
Thank you.
I know that the house at 2211 Center Street has been used by the superintendent of the secret, of the cemetery traditionally for many years. Is that house still being used for that purpose or is it, or what, why are we having this kind of a question on the ballot right now? I'm just wondering if the use has changed or not.
Good question. I'd like to recognize if the Chair of the Cemetery Board of Trustees is on the phone with us tonight. Or any member of these cemetery trustees. Apparently not. Pardon me. Mr. Coin? If not, then I guess I'll go to George Asher. Mr. Asher, I see your hand raised. Can you answer the member's question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Asher, Chair, Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. The member's question about the residence at 211 Center Street is accurate and heretofore had been used by the cemetery superintendent. The current cemetery superintendent does not have a use for the house, as she has a private residence of her own, and determined that it would be in the interest of the cemetery to use it as a rental property, to which end this revolving fund would be set up to sequester money to receive funds from rental. In order to rent it, however, there has to be some upgrade to the facility. Bathroom kitchens have not been touched for quite a while, and this initial $40,000 would be used for that purpose. So the member's question is accurate. It has not been used lately by the cemetery superintendent, and the objective would be to turn it into an income generating property.
Thank you, sir. Ms. King, I see you're still unmuted. Any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak to this article or recommendation? Yes, I see Mr. Furs, you're recognized. And then that's the only hand. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Furs, Precinct 10. Just a quick question as a follow-up, because I also didn't understand the intent of the article. Was there any study on this house being either sold due to the current market conditions or perhaps preferably considered as an affordable housing unit to count towards our affordable housing inventory? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asher. Can you answer that question for the member?
Certainly, Town Moderator, George Asher, Chair, Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. There was no consideration given to sale because I don't believe the cemetery wanted to lose it as an asset, and looking forward at some future date, a cemetery superintendent may want to use it as a residence. Whether it is applicable to affordable housing, that conversation I don't believe happened. I don't believe anybody on the warrant committee raised that as an issue, but it's a valid, it's a valid question, but I think that there may still be some, some dynamics to be discussed if it were to be an affordable housing unit.
Mr. Furs, I see your hands up for a follow-up. Yes, sir?
Yes, just a follow-up. Appreciate that even with affordable housing, the house likely needs upgrades. So appreciate that we probably need to make this investment, and I support it, but I would encourage whoever is responsible for the treatment of this home after the renovations are made to consider it for our affordable housing inventory. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see no other hands, so we'll proceed to the vote. Again, this does require a two-thirds vote. If we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And if we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. We can mute. And the motion carries with a vote of 176 yeses at 91%, 16 nos at 8% and two abstentions at 1%. I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 32 is consent agenda. That takes us to Article 33. Recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY23. Total schools, $58,365,423, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $57,775,615 be raised in the tax levy and $589,808 be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. By prior request and agreement, I'm going to recognize three folks tonight, so Ms. Ada Rosemarin, who is the Chair of the School Committee, Mr. James Jett, the Superintendent, four members' questions and explanation, and if there's further, Ms. Amy Dexter, who is the Assistant Superintendent and largely responsible for the budget. So with that, Ms. Rosemarin, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, you are recognized.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, very clearly.
Okay, good. Thank you and good, good evening, town meeting members. My name is Ada Rosemarin, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member and Chair of the School Committee and Vice Chair of the School Building Committee. I'd like to begin tonight by publicly thanking the Milton Public Schools faculty, staff, and administration for leading us and our students through these past two and a quarter years of a global pandemic. It has been unarguably the most challenging time in education that most of us have seen in our lifetimes. In particular, Superintendent James Jett, Assistant Superintendent Amy Dexter, and Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan, all stepped up during the pandemic and led our district with strong teamwork, educational and financial expertise, and hard work within the school district, with their families, and across town departments. On behalf of the School Committee and the Town of Milton, I'd like to thank them all for their outstanding leadership and service to the Town of Milton. Some of you were fortunate enough to attend the recent Milton High School graduation to congratulate the class of 2022 and wish them well as they head on to their next opportunities. The class of 22 has shown us their fortitude, their inclusive support of one another, their perseverance, and their resilience that will carry them far as they move ahead. The whole community is proud of this class, and we wish them the very best as they move on. You will hear tonight about the challenges that have arisen for our students as a result of the pandemic and how we are working to meet those needs, particularly in the areas of unfinished learning and the social emotional well-being of our students. In numerous cases, this support has come from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. We are very grateful for the collaborative efforts of the Select Board Finance Subcommittee this past year, including Select Board Members Arthur Doyle, Mike Thulis, and Katie Conlin, along with Town Administrator Anne Marie Fagan and former Town Finance Director Karen Praval, who assisted us in accessing these ARPA funds. Nevertheless, as some have already mentioned at this town meeting, when the ARPA funds are gone, the town will be left with some decisions to make about how to adequately support our schools. As most of you know, Milton Public Schools has also experienced rapid enrollment growth since our last school building project was completed in 2008. As of this year, that's an increase of 627 students, an increase greater than the size in any one of our elementary school buildings. You'll hear more about this in the School Building Committee Report for Article 34, where we're working to build a new school to accommodate our expanded enrollment. The School Committee in Milton Public Schools are doing everything we can in the short term to accommodate our substantial over enrollment. We have already converted over 20 non-classroom spaces into classrooms in our buildings. Since we have just about run out of non-cannibalized, non-classroom spaces to convert, we are beginning to study what it will take to install portable classrooms, an expensive and inconvenient option that we've worked hard to avoid up until now. Our expanded enrollment at all grade levels has had an impact on our budget. Nevertheless, Milton Public Schools continues to work Nevertheless, Milton Public Schools continues to work to provide an educational program with rigorous personalized learning that is equitable for all of our students. You will hear from Superintendent Jett about our updated strategic plan that will guide this effort. This evening, we will provide you with an overview of the Milton Public Schools' budget for FY twenty-three. Our budget reflects our student needs for an education that promotes academic excellence, our growing enrollment, our response to the impact of the pandemic on student learning and social emotional well-being, and our strategic goals for the next several years. We're happy to respond to any questions you may have. With that, Mr. Moderator, may I ask Superintendent James Jett and Assistant Superintendent Amy Dexter, please, to be recognized to speak to this article?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Jett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. James Jett, Superintendent of Milton Public Schools. If we could go to the next slide, please. I'll try to go through this very quickly, Mr. Moderator, very quickly. The Milton Public Schools' strategic plan is a new plan. It would take place from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven. The current strategic plan that we had in place runs out this June, two thousand and twenty-two. As you can see from the diagram here, the three pillars that we identified, personalized learning, safe and supportive schools, which is a social emotional learning component, and equity in learning. If you go to the next slide. We feel as though when these three initiatives are realized, students will experience a robust, academically rich school experience. The district will experience growth in high-stake testing outcomes. Performance outcomes such as achievement, opportunity gaps will be reduced and/or eliminated. Next slide. The strategic plan has four-part process. The historical review includes what has been done to date, current data, data trends, program reviews and audits, historical considerations. This part of the process initiated engagement from many stakeholder groups in the town. The second one, develop initiatives and process benchmarks. As you saw, the historical data and stakeholders' data drives this initiative. As stated in the beginning, MPS has identified the three strategic initiatives. It is our belief that we pursue these initiatives. Students will have those outcomes that I just mentioned. Number three, finalize the action plan. Each of these strategic initiative teams, as in the process and close to finalizing developing a robust action plan to help prioritize and roll out each initiative. These plans will be revised on an ongoing basis, but target the first year of implementation one year at a time. And then finally, outcome metrics goal. We just had a meeting last week with our metrics advisory team. And one of the things we wanted to do was do a quick review of the current data and looking back. And then we talked about discussions of comparable data at districts and then setting the frameworks for moving forward. As many people know, some of the high-stake tests like the MCAS back in two thousand and twenty was not administered during the spring because we were remote in COVID. That was the first year. Last year, there was a hybrid model of the MCAS, where half of the students took one section of the MCAS and the other half of the students took the other, and they combined those scores. Although this information was helpful for diagnostics, it wasn't helpful for accountability purposes, and that is indicated by the town. So the next slide, I'm going to, Mr. Moderator, I'm asking if you could acknowledge Assistant Superintendent of Business Amy Dexter?
Yes, sir. Ms. Dexter, you're recognized. Ms. Dexter, you there?
Yes, sorry about that. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Superintendent Jett. The Milton Public Schools submitted a total needs.
Ma'am, could you just introduce yourself for the audience for protocol?
Okay. Amy Dexter, Assistant Superintendent for Business for Milton Public Schools.
Thank you.
Milton Public Schools submitted a total needs-based request for FY twenty-three of approximately sixty point five million dollars. The total recommended to be funded is fifty-nine point four million from the following three sources of funding. The first source is that from operations, which is tax revenue and other sources of income of fifty-seven point eight million. We have requested five hundred and ninety thousand dollars from free cash to fund one-time costs for new social studies and math curriculum. And in addition, that that total is what is being presented to you in Article thirty-three, which is fifty-eight point four million dollars, which is before this body tonight for consideration for approval and recommendation. In addition to this, the Select Board and School Committee have approved approximately nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand to be funded with American Rescue Plan Act funds as these costs relate to the pandemic-related impacts on student learning and social emotional learning. So the total funding for the Milton Public Schools is approximately fifty-nine point four million for FY twenty-three if the recommendation in Article thirty-three is approved this evening. Of the total sixty point five million dollar total needs-based request, approximately one point one of supplemental requests is unfunded for FY twenty-three. Next slide, please. Of the total recommendation of fifty-nine point four million, approximately eighty-one point five or forty-eight point four million dollars relates to salaries and wages. Approximately eight point eight or fourteen-eight percent relates to contractual non-salary costs. This includes things like transportation, special education out of district tuitions, and utilities. In addition, two point seven or one point six million dollars relates to other non-salary, non-contractual costs. And approximately one percent is the one-time curriculum cost of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Next slide, please. In summary, total Article thirty-three recommendation of fifty-eight point four million dollars in front of this body this evening for consideration has been approved unanimously by the Select Board, unanimously by the School Committee, a majority vote by the Warrant Committee, and we are seeking Town Meeting majority vote this evening. The nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars approved for American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funding was unanimously approved by the Select Board, unanimously approved by the School Committee, but does not require approval of Warrant Committee or Town Meeting. Next slide, please. At this time, I'm going to turn it back to Superintendent Jett, please. If you would please recognize him.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Jett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And this is the last slide for us, and we're talking about the immediate and future concerns. As Chair Rosemary mentioned in her opening statements, a major concern right now is the increased student enrollment, and she referred to that. We're also concerned about the unfinished learning related to COVID. As many people know, we started school in two thousand and twenty on September sixteenth, which was two weeks late. And most of our students went every other day, pretty much for half a day in person, with the afternoons being remote, all the way up until April fifth for our elementary and April twelfth for our middle and high school students. In last year itself, this current year itself, we had a lot of interruptions in our school learning. We had two hundred and thirty staff from September first to June eighth. We had staff members, excuse me, two hundred and forty staff members test positive for COVID. That's the minimum of one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five days due to quarantine requirements. We had fourteen hundred and twenty-six students test positive from September first up until last week, a minimum of five days. That's seven thousand, one hundred and thirty days that students were out of school collectively. So as you could imagine, there's a lot of impact on on student learning. We also wanted to talk about the social emotional learning and behavioral health supports. Our hospitalizations have doubled this year with the pandemic, and it's no surprise that it created a lot of anxiety. The hospitalizations of the students who are younger and younger and longer and longer for their times that they're out of school. We also look for professional development to support some of the initiatives in our strategic plan. We have a growing pre-K program. The number increase of preschool students this past year was a hundred and forty. And then as Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Amy Dexter referred to the curriculum review enhancements, we have a math curriculum review. They went push forward in the social studies. The math curriculum review was last updated more than fifteen years ago. If you go to the DSE website, the recommendation for curriculum review is anywhere from three to five years. And then our social studies curriculum, that was something that hasn't been done, and it was done this past year and a half. At this point in time, Mr. Moderator, I would yield my time and turn it back to you if any members have any questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Superintendent Jett, Chair Rose Marin, and Assistant Superintendent Dexter. I only see two hands raised. Does anyone wish to speak to this article recommendation? We'll take them in order. I see Mr. Vaughn, Ms. Joyce, and Sariel McLean. So, Mr. Paul Vaughn, you're recognized, sir. Mr. Vaughn, if you could unmute. Nope, he's gone. We'll then proceed. Oh, you're there? Okay, yes, sir.
I'm here. I'm a rookie at this technology.
Doing fine.
But not on the figures. The school budget article, I'm making a recommendation that we amend it. The FY twenty-three amount of fifty-eight million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars be replaced by FY twenty-one amount of fifty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Could you hear me okay, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, you're very clear, sir.
Okay. The school board must.
Oh, sorry. And, Mr. Vaughn, someone pointed out a point of order. Could you just introduce your precinct?
Sure. Precinct eight.
Thank you.
The the reduction amount is five million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The school board must apply common sense. Milton lost a town manager and school superintendent of late balancing a town budget. How do you do it? The school curriculum costs are always supported by the town, and that means math, English, history, sciences, language, music, French immersion, and the athletic department. The administrators and teachers regarding equity would be cut. All outside social planning studies would be eliminated. Equity outside contracts to be ended. And the mental health experts for troubled children be provided when necessary. Milton Police has two resource offices. If more are needed, we'll get them. The taxpayers want more accountability. They want itemized bills. I have a question at the conclusion of this. Are the school board, can any items proposed be changed at will by the school board? And I would I would conclude by saying this budget, the budget committee that was appointed by the Warrant Committee, the Subcommittee, did not approve this article. And that goes in sync with the many Milton residents that are just, they're shocked by all of this equity and all of these unique training expenses at multi-dollars. So thank you, Mr. Moderator, for allowing me to make this presentation. I would hope that a second of this amendment might take place.
I was about to ask, is there a second? I see a second from Mr. Kelleher. So, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor to amend Article thirty-three and replace the recommended FY twenty-three amount down to the FY twenty-one amount of fifty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Now, there were some hands that were raised before. If you wish to, we're now going to speak about the motion to amend rather than the overall full budget. So if you'd like to talk about the motion to amend, you could leave your hands up. If you want to talk about the other budgetary items, you might put your hand down, and we may get, we'll get back to that. So at this point, the hands that I see up are Mr. Fundling, Mr. McLean, and Ms. Regina Campbell Malone. And, Mr. Fundling, you're recognized, sir.
Hello. Jay Fundling, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I rise to oppose this amendment. This school, the school budget is complex and has many moving pieces and has been reviewed by the by Ms. Dexter, as well as the Warrant Committee, the school, the school committee. Taking an axe to it in this way would lead to unintended consequences. We have no idea what this would lead to. And I would like to point out to the person who made this amendment, as well as the rest of my town meeting members, we, as town meeting, do not have the ability to tell the schools how to spend their budget. We have the ability to tell them how much they get. So it is within our rights, if we want to accept this amendment, to reduce it to fifty-two million and change. But we would not be able to say, and you will spend it on this, and you will not spend it on that. That's not within our power. So I oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just to clarify, Mr. Fundling is correct. Town meeting is authorized to set the budget, but due to what's referred to as the the strong superintendent rule, the school committee and the superintendent determine the use of those funds, and Mr. Fundling is correct. Next, I see Ms. Regina Campbell Malone. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Hi, thank you very much, Dr. Regina Campbell Malone, Trow Lane, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I just wanted to go on record to say and fully agree with Jay Fundling's, or excuse me, the prior town meeting members.
Thank you.
Suggestion that reducing the budget in this way does not accomplish the goals of the previous speaker who proposed this amendment. The only thing that you're assuring is that the school administrators only have six million dollars less to work with. You could be leaving our students open to reducing advanced placement classes, reducing athletics, reducing all the things that so many people in this town value, completely subject to their determination of what is and is not in the best interest of our students. There is no way for town meeting members to target specific programming by reducing this budget. So I think it is an ill-conceived notion. It was barely a presentation, and I think that we need to be smarter about being more involved in school committee activities and other ways of trying to influence the school budget rather than just willy-nilly slashing the fiscal year twenty-three recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I only see one other hand. That's Mr. Brian Walsh. Sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Walsh, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Day. And I rise to speak against my fellow Town Meeting Member from Precinct Day. I find the recommendation to go back to a two-year-ago budget, FY twenty-one draconian. And, you know, all of us are well-informed as Town Meeting Members and residents of the Town of Milton that there is a burgeoning enrollment, an enrollment that's rising so quickly. There's serious requests to add a new school. And we just came out of COVID, which not only had a dramatic impact on the finances of all of us as residents, if you have construction underway, as I do, you see the increased costs, but it's had tremendously difficult impact on our school system. Prior to this motion, I had hoped to wait and get up and raise my hand and ask my fellow Town Meeting Members to fully support the school committee's budget. You know, the Milton Public Schools, we enjoy terrific public safety, great service for our DPW and other departments in the town, but we've received no greater service than what we're getting from the Milton Public Schools. Children went through there. They have all done well. One of my child is an assistant school for a neighboring town, and I'm a lot closer to some of the tremendous challenges there. And I'm a lot closer to some of the tremendous challenges they've had for the last two years. And again, to to level this back to a previous year's budget is draconian. All of us as residents really are rewarded in our property values and other quality of life with a quality Milton public. That's what they have. That's what we have. That's what I want to maintain. And I strongly urge my fellow Town Meeting Members to move past this not well-thought-out recommendation, well-thought-out in the sense of the dramatic impact it would have. And then vote no on this motion to amend. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. I see two other hands up. Ms. Rachel Ricardella and then Mr. Vaughn. I'll come back to you after all first-time speakers complete. After that, Mr. Mulligan. Then, Ms. Ricardella, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Rachel. It's Rachel Ricardella, Precinct Three. I rise to support this amendment because while my other Town Meeting Members are correct that the Town Meeting does not have the ability to weigh in on individual matters of the budget. It's also been frequent discussion here at Town Meeting that the use of taxpayer dollars for for the schools has been up for debate and that Town Meeting would like to weigh in more on these matters. By reverting to this other budget, we are forcing the school committee to make some tough decisions. And I think that's what the school needs to do. There's no other way for us to have this debate at Town Meeting, so we have to force the issue. And I would urge my fellow Town Meeting Members to support this amendment so that some of these difficult decisions get made. I would like to say that I am a parent of two children in Milton Public Schools. I have no desire to take money from education for any children within the town. But I'm also a taxpayer here. I'm a citizen here. I have neighbors who don't have children in the schools. We need to be Town Meeting Members for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. By the way, just before we go to other speakers, the Town Clerk has pointed out something I need to get clarity from. Mr. Vaughn, before I unmute you, I need to ask you just one question and then ask you not to expound any further until other members speak. But we need you to specify of the two sources of funds you see in the bold text, the fifty-seven million and the five hundred eighty-nine thousand. From which does your motion seek to make a reduction? All from the tax levy? Or split some way between the tax levy and the free cash? So, if we could unmute Mr. Vaughn, if you could just answer that question, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I would say it would be from the recommended FY twenty-three amount of fifty-eight million, three sixty-five, four twenty-three as shown on the on the documentation, page thirty-nine. So, you know, that amount can be flexible, but we want to move the article from the fifty-eight proposed to the fifty-two as a counter proposal.
Yes, sir. But my specific question is, you see the sentence below the table in your warrant? There are two sources of funds that made up that original fifty-eight. The fifty-seven point seven seven five and the five hundred eighty-nine thousand free cash. I need you to tell me from which of which of those are going to be reduced as part of your motion?
Whatever whatever amount is workable, so be it.
How about if I assume you mean from the general tax levy, just to keep the discussion going?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Town Clerk. Given that, I'd like to see a second again on now reducing the fifty-seven, seven, seven, five by the amount the member has specified. And we'll get that exact map. I'm just not, if someone has a calculator right in front of them and could work that, we're working that. I see a second from Ms. O'Doherty. Okay, we'll come back to that exact amount. Now, I would like to return back to the members as they put up their hand, Mr. Mulligan, Mr. Ebon, Ms. Craighead and Ms. Agostino. So, Mr. Mulligan, you're recognized.
Jim Mulligan, Precinct Two. I guess my question would be, if we went to a FY twenty-one budget number, you know, I'd like to hear from the school committee what exactly would happen on July first when the budget got implemented, A. And B, I I think that I don't I don't think, I think that if people attended school committee meetings and listened to some of the discussions that happened at those meetings, I think some of the clarity with the budget, I think, would come through. I I sat through many, many meetings over the years. I think that at the end of the day, I think this is the sort of draconian cuts. This is this is going to be like a, we're going to be taking a meat cleaver to the budget on July first. I I vehemently oppose this idea. I think this is the wrong way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see Superintendent Jet, your hand is raised. Perhaps Superintendent Jet, you could respond to some of the points here tonight, perhaps make a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is James Jet, Superintendent of Milton Public Schools. I just want to respond to the first proposed approximately a five million dollar cut and try to put that in perspective. On an average of seventy-five thousand dollars, that would be sixty-seven teachers that would be lost. When we talk about why is the budget increasing, we don't have the ability to cap our enrollment. Any student that lives and resides in the town of Milton is allowed to come to the Milton Public Schools. In regards to the equity issue, I want people to understand a student that arrives at the doors with hearing, hearing impaired, providing him him or her FM system is equity. When a student has a learning disability and unable to read, providing them with extra support is equity. If a student has other issues, reading, providing them the technology assistance that they need, that is equity. Unfortunately, I think the narrative of equity has been hijacked. Special education is equity. Providing students with opportunities for rigorous classes is the equity. The AP program equity for our students who achieve and excel in cutting them, I think, would be devastating. And then my final statement to that. In my history of Milton since nineteen ninety-seven, I would argue that our budget has been vetted or looked under every rock, every stone. In anything that was asked of us, we provided to the warrant committee and all those who asked. And we have multiple public meetings about the budget, put it out publicly to all three thousand families that go out to that, to our distribution list. And we have multiple open meetings with the warrant committee as well. So, people have residents had plenty of opportunity to ask questions. In addition to that, I've held several coffee hours, no script. Anyone who wanted to come, ask any questions they want about the budget, about the school, the model and what we are doing is transparent. The reason why the budget is up is because our enrollment is growing up. And to put it in further perspective, we have four elementary schools. Glover, Tucker, Glover Cunningham and Collycock were built for five hundred. All three of those schools are well-operating, well over six hundred-plus students. Tucker was built for four hundred and is operating about four hundred and seventy students. As Chair Rose Marion indicated, we have made conversions in the library spaces. Anybody that's been in the buildings to accommodate additional classrooms. A cut of sixty-seven teachers will be devastating and it will be the equivalent of closing almost one of our elementary schools. So, I yield my time, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for the opportunity to respond.
Thank you, sir. We'll proceed with the members. I see Mr. Ebon, Ms. Craighead, Ms. Agostino and Mr. D'Amato. So, Mr. Ebon, you're recognized.
Aqua Ebon, Precinct Four. I rise to oppose the motion on the consideration. I understand that there is need for us to be prudent. But I believe this is the wrong avenue to do it. As the last speaker mentioned, the school committee did provide many opportunities for us to weigh into this. And we should have taken those opportunities. I think cutting, as our superintendent mentioned, sixty-seven teachers would be devastating. Please, let's oppose this and go back to funding our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I go to Ms. Craighead. Ma'am, you're recognized. There you go.
Hi, my name is Elaine Craighead, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member and former member of the school committee. I'm speaking in opposition to this motion. First of all, as others have pointed out, at many school committee meetings, at warrant committee meetings, at meetings to the public, the school committee has exhaustively gone over the finer details of this budget. They've given very detailed budget books to the warrant committee and have always had a policy. Finance committee meetings, for instance, have been open to the public to attend, not even in person. They've been virtual for quite some time now. All Town Meeting Members, all members of the community could have sat in on those meetings to find out exactly the the specific details of the budget. A former speaker who is supporting this motion said that it's time that the school committee had to make, that the school committee has to make tough decisions. The school committee and the finance committee make tough decisions about the budget all the time. There, in fact, are millions of dollars that the school committee could use to educate students in the town of Milton that we don't have, even if this recommended FY twenty-three budget is approved. For instance, one thing that occurs to me is that the school, the students of of Milton could use another bus. But a bus costs just about as much money as a teacher does. So, you constantly have to weigh the decision of a teacher in front of a classroom or an extra bus to transport more students. Those are the kinds of decisions that they make every single day. Thank you, Mr. Jet, for doing the math about the cuts in staff. It would be absolutely devastating to the school, to the schools to have this kind of cut, this kind of frivolous, in my opinion, cut to the budget. I was going to speak a few minutes later in in support of the recommended FY twenty-three budget, given how closely the school committee, the finance committee have worked with the select board and the select board's finance subcommittee to work out ways in which to make this work with ARPA funds and ESER funds and all sorts of things. I think it's it's been a really creative and collaborative process. And for those Town Meeting Members who want it to be within their purview to decide on line items in the budget, that just is not going to happen. The schools have the right to make the decisions and they make the those tough decisions, as I said, all the time about how to spend those funds judiciously and equitably and in the best interest of the students of Milton. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I will go to Ms. Agostino. Ma'am, you're, excuse me, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct Nine, former selectman and former member of the warrant committee. So, the questions I actually have to speed things up could be answered when you allow the chair of the warrant committee to have the final say. Several people have addressed the fact that we vote one number and, you know, they're allowed to do that. This went into place many years ago. And long-term Town Meeting Members may remember many Town Meetings where I would question the details because Milton did not provide the details. However, the state now does require, and I just double-checked, the details of the budget are readily available online because the state requires that they be submitted in a particular format, I believe, and it appears to be the same because it was fiscal fiscal twenty-three. So, maybe the warrant committee chair could confirm, in fact, that that is how the school budgets presented to the residents in public hearings all the time where you can go and question things. And it is all under the under the law and the requirements. And my other question arises from the comment that the warrant committee subcommittee voted against this budget. And I don't really see that in the comments. So, if the warrant committee chair could address that, because the warrant committee subcommittee would have spent many, many, many hours reviewing this budget with the schools. So, those are my two questions. And I, the one thing I do agree is that it's important for questions to be asked. And the best place to get them taken care of would be at those open hearings of the school budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Maybe rather than when the chair reports back the warrant committee opinion on the motion, I may recognize Mr. Asher right now. And to see what you saw on the budget and the subcommittee explanation, and then I think I'll go to Ms. Dexter, who can probably answer how the budget is prepared. Mr. Asher, are you there?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Asher, Chair Warrant Committee, Precinct Member Town Six, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. The school budget is presented to the warrant committee in a great deal of detail. The subcommittee met, actually, we had several presentations as a body and the subcommittee met in great detail with both the school committee, the superintendent and the subcommittee of the the finance subcommittee of the school committee. I I want to just emphasize that while there was disagreement on the committee itself about certain aspects of the budget and some of the issues that were raised by the subcommittee and other members of the warrant committee, the warrant committee did vote to approve this. And whether or not it was unanimous or it was majority is almost irrelevant. It was a majority vote and it passed. And it came, the recommendation came to the town meeting after extreme deliberation on the part of the warrant committee with the members of the school committee. As the comment does not mention the subcommittee not being in favor because it's a majority rule vote. And while that may be of import to some and that information is available, obviously, through watching our online meetings and looking at our minutes, it's kind of irrelevant simply because the majority vote was taken and the recommendation did come to the town meeting as a result of that vote. So, while there were concerns that were raised about several issues and some of them are in the comment, many of the issues were answered by the superintendent, by the members of the school committee and the administration. I think it's it is fair to say that, like other expenses in the town and many of the allocations that we see, we question them. We ask, can they be deferred? Can we be judicious in how the money was spent? Is, in the case of the school committee, there were several questions asked about curriculum, asked about surveys, asked about line items that might be used differently if the need arose. And that is the purview of the school committee and the administration. Ed Reform of ninety-three permits that. We might not like it. Some people might like it otherwise, but that's the way it is. And we, as a warrant committee, recognize that and we send that recommendation to the town meeting, knowing that is is part of the of the calculus. So, I I I think I've answered the questions. If there's anything further, I'm more than happy to to respond to the members' question.
Ms. Agostino, Mr. Superintendent Jet's hand is up. He maybe also answered that budget question. Superintendent Jet, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was going to let Amy Dexter speak before me if that was possible, sir.
Very good. And Ms. Dexter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Two points I would like to make. Mass General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-four is where it states that the vote of the legislative body of a city or towns shall establish the total appropriation for the support of the public schools, but may not limit the authority of the school committee to determine expenditures within the total appropriation. That's just the section of Mass General Laws, if anybody would like to refer to that. My second point is in Table Eight of the warrant, pages sixty-five and sixty-six is a breakdown of the school department budget request by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Program Areas. For reference, it is in there. Thank you.
Ms. Agostino, I see you're still present. Any follow-up to those questions?
I definitely appreciate the Mass General Law, and I would just add that if we didn't have this law, then a lot of the issues that arose through COVID might not have been so readily addressed because COVID wasn't happening when the first budget had been approved. So, I do feel that we should not vote for this motion and move on to the full budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see a lot of hands are now up. Mr. Chinman, Ms. McCarthy, Mr. Different, Mr. Vaughn, Ms. O'Doherty, Mr. O'Hern, Mr. Fahey. So, we'll start with Mr. Chinman. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Chinman, Precinct Two. I have a question for you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I, I think the Milton voters and Milton parents have a right to know the names of every town meeting member who votes in favor of cutting over $5.5 million in the school budget. As I understand it, after you called this vote, if 25 members raise their hand electronically, that will, will call for a roll call vote. First, am I right on that procedure?
You are correct. For our, the motion we took at the beginning on last Monday night, you're correct.
So my second question is whether the town clerk actually has to call the names or whether the technology we're using allows for those names to be known immediately and 25 people raising their hands would just allow for those names to be published?
I believe the motion we took called for the clerk calling out the names one by one. We do have the technology to selectively, because Zoom limits us on how many of those recorded votes we can do per night. We do have the ability to capture it. I don't know how quickly we can turn it around and announce it because there's some massaging or my team is looking. But at the moment, unless we change things, the body said we will call a roll call vote one by one.
Is it possible to move to change that rule at this point and, and have this particular vote made, one of the ones that the Zoom technology will record the names and publish?
Yes, if you would though permit me to perhaps have the members who want to speak to the motion, we go through them and then I, I'll take a moment while they're doing that and come back and answer your question, how to address your procedural motion on changing.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chinman. With that, we'll go next to Ms. Colleen McCarthy. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Hi, good evening, fellow town meeting members. Colleen McCarthy, Precinct Four. Just a couple of comments. I am certainly extremely supportive of our schools, both as a mother of three Cunningham students, one of which receives special education services and likely will for her lifetime in our district. I do implore, I, and so with that being said, I'm certainly not in the, in the business of cutting our budget. However, I do implore eagerly, earnestly and seriously to ask our school committee to have a better, open forum opportunity for citizens of the community, both parents and taxpayers as you think about this budget. I think coming out of this past, the past couple of years, we have a lot of passionate concerns in the community about how our budget is being spent. And quite frankly, we have limited resources. So I just ask that, in recognition of a, a vote not to slash the budget, that the school committee make the decision and abide by that, to have better communication between the residents of this community and the school committee. And to this state, I'm not aware of any open forums, citizen speak opportunities where there's actually a back and forth dialogue. That's all I have to say, but thank you again to everyone who serves our schools. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we'll go to Mr. Michael Vaughn. Sir, you're recognized. Mr. Vaughn, it looks like you may have, we may have to make you a. That'll just take us a minute. Mr. Asher, if you could go on mute.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me? Okay, Mike Vaughn, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Mr. Moderator, question for the body, if possible, or if you could answer, is a forensic audit of the books something that could be done? Question. And the funds for that audit would come from the ARSA money, so there is no spending what we don't have because we're getting gifts from the feds. I do believe that the school does a fantastic job, but I'd like to see a little bit more of tightening the belt as what we all have to do in our day-to-day lives, tighten the belt. So I would like to ask that question if it could be answered, please. A forensic audit of the books.
Could you be a little more specific just so I and other members understand, for example, which books, a specific year or of the proposed budget?
Well, the, the proposed budget and, you know, if we could also look into stipends, if we could look into where does the money go? It's, you know, I, I also have elderly neighbors and they've asked me to question. They don't have kids in the school system. They're paying an awful lot of taxes. And when you see, you know, you see these silly things coming up that has to be addressed. It's a waste of money. Why not hire more teachers? Why not hire more counselors that are gonna be able to help kids who have questions about questions? As opposed to sitting in an equity circle saying, you know, you, you kicked the red ball in the playground. Do you feel bad? I mean, it's silly.
Okay, so Mr. Vaughn, let me make sure.
Yes.
Are you saying, so one, first off, there's a point of order, by the way, by Mr. McKay about whether this is in scope of the recommended motion to reduce the appropriation for the school department. But your specific question, you talking about the 50, you want to understand where the proposed 58.4 million is going toward for FY23 in the recommendation? Is that it?
Well, I, I would like to see an independent accounting firm come in and calm the books to confirm that we're getting the best bang for our dollar, spending it this way, that way, or another way. Period.
Okay. Tell you what, I'll go back to first, Mr. Asher, the Chair of the Warrant Committee. Mr. Asher, could you just respond to the members' question on financial topics?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Asher, Chair Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I, I believe that there are some concerns that are being raised tonight that have been voiced in many quarters. Certainly, the warrant committee devotes extraordinary amounts of time because this is almost half of the town's budget. It is exceedingly important. We have a great deal at stake supporting the schools. I do want to point out that we spent no, no less than a dozen hours as a committee talking about this, which incorporated the school department, the superintendent, the subcommittee, finance subcommittee of the schools and our, our subcommittee devoted to the public schools alone, probably devoted one member probably 50 to 60 hours analyzing the budget. Did we come up with issues that we questioned? Certainly. Did we raise these with the school department, with the superintendent? Absolutely. Did we get answers that everyone found satisfactory? Of course not. No two people, no 10 people looking at the same issue will agree, and that's democracy. But the reality is, the, the analysis was performed as well as we could. And our recommendations went to the school, school committee and tried to be as constructive as possible. There were questions raised about, as I said earlier, curriculum. There were questions raised about student facing teachers as opposed to other positions, and there was a very healthy back and forth. I think a forensic audit would be an interesting thing to conduct, but I don't know necessarily that it's practical at the present moment. I also think that the warrant committee, which you, the town meeting depends on to do this work, conducted as exhaustive an analysis as could be done, given the information we had. And we believe we received cooperation to get it done as much as was available while we were doing this. And again, I will just emphasize, not everything is perfect. We understand that. Not everything is as easily understood as many people would. But I will point out to the town meeting members that the information about the school budget has been available. It is something that anyone could actually look at at a single point in time. And to bring it up at this juncture, while we do look at stewardship and making sure that the town is adequately using its resources, I think this venue is, is kind of difficult at this juncture to go about taking, call it what you will, a meat cleaver, a chainsaw, or a scalpel to this budget, which has been vetted left, right, and center. Would be extremely difficult.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is, I didn't take the, point of order came up, is this a motion? I took it as a question. Can a forensic audit be conducted? So with that, I'll go to Mr. Jett and Ms. Dexter. Can you answer that question?
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes, the member said, can a forensic audit of the, audit is a past activity, given my background, not a future activity. So perhaps you could talk about how an accounting of the, the actual versus budget is. No.
If I'm not mistaken, my, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, thank you very much, James Jett, Superintendent Milton Public Schools. If I'm not mistaken, it was outside audited, audits the budget a couple of times a year. That was done under Glenn Pavlicek. I wanted town meeting members to know, the warrant committees members all get a budget book that is delivered to them, that they had, as Chair Asher alluded to. They had full access to everything that they had, any questions they had. Those questions were answered on a public meeting that I believe that was recorded and shared with folks and a written transfer to those questions was shared. So once again, I would reiterate my earlier comments by saying, in my, in my opinion, I think the Milton Public Schools budget this past year has probably been vetted, looked at a lot more under the microscope than probably in the history of the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Dexter, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Amy Dexter, Assistant Superintendent for School Business, Milton Public Schools. I just want to follow up on a previous speaker's comment about the audit. The Milton Public Schools, along with the Town of Milton Departments, undergo an annual financial statement audit every year, conducted by Powers and Sullivan. This is an in-depth audit of the fiscal activities of the town and school departments. It also includes a follow-up in a management letter with any identified issues they might come across. Those reports can all be found on the Town of Milton website under, I believe it's the finance accounting area. In addition, the Powers and Sullivan also audits what's called the end-of-year report that the Milton Public Schools submit to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And there's also a report on that that comes back. In reference to the detail of the budget, it goes right down to every single employee that's part of the Milton Public Schools. At the time, the budget is put together in the fall. It does not list names, but it lists positions by school, by department. Very transparent, and that can all be found on the Milton Public Schools website. It's been up there for months. And we have had numerous meetings, including an open budget forum, which is required by law, where people could ask questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. By the way, Mr. Chinman, I think I have an answer for you, but if okay, I'll go through the members that have questions on the motion to amend and then come back and answer your process question, but we do have an answer. I think next go to Ms. O'Doherty, Mr. O'Hern, Mr. Fahey, and Mr. Potter. If anyone else wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Otherwise, I'd like to cut off debate with these four speakers and then we can go to the vote. So with that, I'll go to Ms. O'Doherty.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Hi, I'm Mary Jane O'Doherty, Precinct Eight, Town Member. I just had a question and then just a few comments. I think we all know that the school budget, yes, has been looked at, and I think a lot of people are unaware of what the school budget is and where to find it in the town. I think members that are on the town meeting and other people in the know are aware of that, but most people in this town don't have any clue how to find it or what it means. So I think that's why it's our job to figure it out. So my one question was, what, what is the placeholder budget for this year? And I want, I'm just wondering if they have looked at that, and I feel like transparency is not happening right now in the school system and on the budget. And we all know that we have ideas of where the budget goes, but then once the school year happens, the budget changes and there's a lot of outside contracts that we need to look at and how much money is going into those outside contracts. And I think that's, the schools right now have a lot of top-heavy funding in administration that we also have to look at, and I think we have to bring that down to the teachers and the parents. So I think the school committee really has to take a good look at where the money's going. And I hope that we can count on them to do that. Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm not sure I heard a question to answer tonight.
The question was, what is, is there a placeholder budget for this year?
What, could you describe?
That's for retired, retired teachers. When they retire and their salaries are out there and then they hire less expensive teachers, what happens to that extra money?
Ah, okay, so we authorized a certain expenditure, assuming a teacher was gonna, experienced teacher was gonna work the full year and they didn't, then they hired a less experienced teacher. What happens to that, those funds they were assuming? Was that your question?
Yes, correct.
Ma'am, is that, is that pertinent to the motion to amend here?
Well, I think it has to do with the budget, and I'm just curious what they do with that money.
Okay, with that, Mr. Jett, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, sir. What we call that is a turnover, a transition. One of the things that I want to caution people by saying, not every time that we have an opportunity to have someone retire, that we're hiring someone at less subject areas like chemistry and math are very hard to recruit people, particularly at the high school level where you have to be content-specific certified. The other issues that we run into, we have well over 500 and something faculty and staff. And if a person gets cancer and have to be out, they utilize their sick days and we have to pay for a sub to replace them. As many people know, I highlighted some of the numbers this year with the number of people that had to be out to quarantine for covert-related. And so it's not always a savings on that because you have maternity leaves, paternity leaves, you have FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, all of those things that by the law, we are required to still pay those folks if they have the, the appropriate sick days to do that. But we also have to have a replacement in the classroom. Mr. Moderator, can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
So I do want to caution folks because I get the sense that people are questioning issues regarding the equity audit. And I think it's important to highlight that the town is undergoing equity audit. We just heard Carolyn Consella talk about a health assessment that they're doing. Oftentimes, you do these audits to make sure things are being done appropriately and it's also done, it's better to have it done by outside independent contractor that does not necessarily work for the schools. And then my final statement about the equity that seems to keep coming up, you know, and I use this analogy all the time, the Boston Marathon. The expectations are still 26.2 miles. How people complete that expectation may vary. Some people run it in two hours. Some people walk and run. Some people use a wheelchair. Some people use a bike. Some people take rest. But when they've crossed that finish line, they still feel the same enjoyment for fulfillment. That is equity. It never once did the person who won stood on a podium and said, I won, but you took something from me. We provided equity all year long. AP classes, over 300 students at the high school take AP classes. That's equity, provided another opportunity for those who excel in their academic content areas and want to stretch themselves with the rigor. So I, I think that there needs to be more of a conversation, and as we said, that one of the speakers said, we need to be transparent about the budget in open meetings. Again, I want to remind people, our budget meetings were not only public, some of them were recorded. All school committee meetings are recorded through Milton Access TV and shared and on their website. We have been very transparent about the budget. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jett. Next, we'll go to Mr. O'Hern. Sir, you're recognized.
Hi, Nicholas O'Hern, Precinct Six. Just thank you again for the opportunity to speak for just a moment. I could not be more vehemently opposed to this budget cut. Words like draconian used, I would say devastating. I speak for many years of experience in education. I would ask those that are considering this to please consider looking at per pupil expenditure in Milton compared with like towns. Before you were to make a cut of, you know, almost five, five and a half million dollars to a budget, I would really ask that you consider this. As Superintendent Jett, consider 67 teacher cuts would be a consideration. I, I've been listening and participating in town meetings since the first night as we talked about fire safety and police safety. You're talking about cutting 67 teachers. You're talking about cutting sixty-seven teachers from, you know, you, you're talking about theoretically an eighth to a tenth and maybe even more than that. Mr. Jett can probably speak to it in terms of the number of teachers that you're cutting from this budget. As I said, as a longtime educator, more than ever, schools are no longer just teaching math, science, social studies, and reading. The, the social emotional needs of children could not be greater. And so again, the needs of the schools are greater, what the schools provide are greater. I would absolutely, you know, add to the sentiment of so many. We may not all agree on specifics of the budget. I would encourage people to be a part of the school committee conversation. I would encourage people to, to speak up on behalf of what they believe and the direction they want their schools to go in. But I can tell you that a cut of five, five and a half million dollars to the budget would be beyond devastating for the schools. And so again, one more time, I speak, I could not be more vehemently opposed to this. And I ask that those are considered and voting in favor of this, that they please consider the, what, what their actions would, would result in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll go to Mr. Fahey and then Ms. Potter, and then we've got the folks who want to speak a second time. Mr. Fahey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sean Fahey, Precinct Nine. I think this particular article this year and any other year in town meeting has always drawn a significant amount of emotion and passion from our town meeting members, and it probably always will. We're probably asking all educators, no matter what level they're educating at, to teach in the most difficult circumstances that they could. So I have great respect for what the Milton Public School system has done and continues to do. Although Mr. Vaughn has raised an issue that I think, actually, I'll say I believe is a concern for a large number of residents in Milton. The fifty-eight million dollar value is significant. Reading the comments by the warrant committee, the warrant committee indicates it is a ten point three percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. Now, while many probably could foresee how impossible disruptive it would be to do what Mr. Vaughn has, has asked the body to do. I think Mr. Vaughn is raising an issue that really needs more consideration than this, than just the discussion on town meeting floor. If I'm hearing correctly from those that have responded, including Mr. Jett, there is a level of transparency that is going to be offered to the residents. So the residents can see how the tax dollars that we are all committing are being spent. I believe Mr. Vaughn would deeply appreciate that level of transparency. And for all the residents that we all represent, I think that is something that we owe to the residents and are due to the residents. There's one point I would like to draw attention to. If you go to the first paragraph, where the warrant committee writes their comment, and I'm going to read the last two sentences of that paragraph. And this is how it reads. Nine members voted in favor of the recommendation with one abstention. It continues on. The three members voting against the recommendation represent the majority of the subcommittee tasked with reviewing this budget. I'm going to read it again. The three members voting against the recommendation represent the majority of the subcommittee tasked with reviewing this budget. That tells me that the people, the members of the warrant committee that had the duty and responsibility carved out to focus on this particular budget, the ones that knew it the most, that understood it probably better than the other members, voted against it. There's a message there, certainly for me, and hopefully for other members within the body of town meeting. I have no further comment.
Thank you. That will go to Ms. Kathleen Potter. May you be recognized. We unmute.
There it is, there it is.
There you go. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Kathleen Potter, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I vote against this. I don't have children in the, in the public school system anymore. I have three successful children who went through the Milton Public School system. And it's always been my understanding that it's the social contract that we all agree to. Some people paid to educate my children. I will pay to educate other people's children and so on and so forth. And our school committee has countless hours of meetings and subcommittee meetings. And there are open meetings and there are things online you can find, and it is very transparent. Please vote no for this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we'll go to Ms. Felton and Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, Deborah Felton. I just have a few comments. A forensic audit implies that there has been a crime committed. And I find that on behalf of the school committee members, James Jett, and the rest of the administration, very insulting. We have never had any evidence of any improper behavior or from my mind, improper expenditures. That's one thing. The other thing is people should, if they're interested in the Warren Committee's deliberations on the school committee, they should watch the Warren Committee deliberations. They were at times very acrimonious. And I, I just, the, the tenor of this conversation, I just find very insulting. People can watch the school bill, the school committee, the Warren Committee, the Select Board, and you can find out what's going on in this town, and people should now take personal responsibility and not wait until town meeting to complain that they don't have the information. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I have only one new speaker, and that's Mr. Walker. Sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. My initial plan was to be silent on this discussion, but I think it's appropriate to make a few points as to what some of the key truths are that have been raised and what people should do about it. You, town meeting members might recall that there was a motion last year with regard to the school budget where the motion was to add money. I opposed that, and I said, trust the process. This is a motion to reduce the budget. And I have the same recommendation, which is we should oppose it simply because this is too late in the process to try to make changes to the budget that, that are, would be substantive. And the, the important reality, though, is that if you, I, I said all I had to say over the last few months about how the priority, what the priorities seem to be based on how the money was being spent, some of which I didn't agree with. And there's been a lot of discussion about the meetings being open. Warrant committee meetings are open, the finance committee meetings for the school committee are open, so too are the select board finance committee meetings. But realistically, unless you have a lot of time on your hands and don't have a job or aren't running a business as I am, it's going to be pretty hard for you to attend all of those meetings. And here's the, here's the reality. Even if you have all the information, the question is, what, if anything, can you do with it? And how might you influence the results? And the reality is not much at all. So here's the bottom line. If you believe that there are some issues with how money is being spent, I do, then you should run for school committee. That's the, that's the best option. The second best option would be to run for a select board. The third best option would be to ask the moderator to appoint you to the warrant committee. And I'll close with a point that a previous member just made, a previous speaker just made, which is it is very unusual, the, the way that the, the warrant committee structure should work, if it's working correctly, is that the public safety subcommittee, the public work subcommittee, the school subcommittee should all be experts on those respective budgets. So not only the warrant committee, but everyone should rely heavily on, on those experts with regard to what the right priorities are and how the money should be spent. So it's very unusual that the school subcommittee or the warrant committee oppose this budget. But it's too late now to try to raise those issues. So my recommendation is that you vote no on this motion, that we approve the budget once we get back to the main motion and we move on. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. So I only see two second speakers, Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Paul Vaughn and Ms. Regina Campbell Malone. So Mr. Paul Vaughn, you're recognized. If you could be brief, sir. Nope, your hand, looks like your hand went down. With that, I'll go to Ms. Regina Campbell Malone. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate being recognized. I just want to make two quick points. One, that out of the five point four million dollars that the person who raised this amendment raised, many of those items have been spoken to by the, the comment below the article. So eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of that is being proposed to special ed, which is something that the state has cited us for not honoring our duties as an, as a school district. Another sixty-one thousand are for instructional hardware and software. Another five hundred and ninety thousand are for the new math and social studies curriculum that have been sorely out of date. Seventy thousand dollars was for an additional bus to allow our students to make it to school. And another seventy-seven thousand dollars was for utility and heat, which are all about, are, are all related to post-pandemic ventilation. Okay? These are costs that are easy to see, are relevant and reasonable, and should not be excluded from the budget. Additionally, we, we also want to make sure that someone who doesn't understand that a forensic audit is only done after expenditures are, are made, is not in charge of the budget of a school district. You cannot do a forensic audit on a budget. You only do a forensic audit on expenditures to try and find something that was misappropriated after the fact, just like you can't do a forensic exam on an individual who's not dead yet. Okay? And so I encourage the members of town meeting to take into consideration that this current amendment is being proposed by someone who doesn't understand accounting and the fact that a forensic audit can't be done on a budget. Thank you. I, I whole, wholeheartedly disapprove of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I'm going to go to the chair of the school committee. Ms. Rose Maron asks for the school committee's opinion of this motion to amend. After that, I'm going to go to Mr. Asher, and then I'm going to answer Mr. Chinman's question on process. So Ms. Rose Maron, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ada Rose Maron, School Committee Chair, Precinct Two, Town Meeting Member. The school committee votes unanimously no on this proposed amendment. And I have just a couple of comments to make in relation to some of the comments that have been made this evening in regard to this amendment. The details of our budget have been very available to, as, as Chair Asher said, were a large part of hours of discussion with the warrant committee, back and forth. Conversations at school committee meetings, at school committee finance meetings that meet every week. These are open meetings. They are recorded so that you don't have to watch them in real time. You can go to Milton Access TV and watch the recordings. If you are concerned about taking so much time to watch the meetings, we're spending that much time in those meetings, and we're looking very carefully at every expenditure. As, as one town meeting member talked about, some of the increases that are, that are well justified in our budget. We, we stand behind this budget with the impact of the pandemic on, on our learning and social emotional development of our students, as well as the increase in our enrollment as, as we are trying constantly to, to keep up with, with that enrollment. And lots of families moved to Milton because of the schools. And Milton owes it to its students to do right by them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Then I'll go, Mr. Asher, Chair of the Ward Committee. What's the Ward Committee's opinion of this motion to amend?
Mr. Moderator, we're in the process of taking a vote, but I, before, while we're doing that, I do want to make a couple of comments just to reflect back to the town meeting members and with great respect for the town meeting.
If we could just be brief.
Our process is extremely rigorous. And the reality is that while members of, while members of a subcommittee may have their opinions, we all look at the budget. We all look at everything that is before us in great detail. And some member have pointed out that our discussions were acrimonious. Well, you know, disagreement can be that way. And I think that what we come up with is a consensus that still reflects the majority. We all have opinions, and the opinions have been fleshed into the recommendation. And I'm gratified that some members actually read our comments. I question that from time to time by the tenor of the questions that are being asked. But the reality is that I will speak very vigorously in defense of our process because that is one thing that we think, we, the committee, and I as chair, think is the most important thing that we do. And I, I will, I will take some offense, very honestly, at criticism of the process because the process is extraordinarily rigorous. And to disagree with the outcome is one thing, but to question the validity of how we arrive at it is something that I will defend very, very strongly in all cases. And I do believe that we have, I think we have a recommendation, and the Warren Committee does not support this amendment.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to, I see a member's hand is up, but he, he was able to convey his question. I'll answer it in my statement, but first let me go to Mr. Chinman. Mr. Chinman, we, we've tested everything in the Zoom capability, but we've not tested what you asked for is a, is a live recording of the vote, a live tabulation and a live display. So rather than wing it here on live TV in town meeting, I, I'd prefer that the members, we execute the roll call vote per the recommendation for a remote town meeting because I can't guarantee we'd get it right on our very first try. So hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Chinman. I'll let you decide what to do. So by the way, I will, we're about to go to that vote. I will read what we called for in Rule Eleven, which has been modified since Mr. Chinman raised it. The moderator will display and announce the results of electronic vote. If the vote is doubted by twenty-five town meeting members clicking the raise hand button, then there will be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order. And each town meeting member upon his or her name being called shall unmute their microphone and answer yes or no. I see about two hundred and forty attendees, probably some panelists that are there. We may have two hundred and fifty names to go through or so tonight, but that's up to the twenty, if I see twenty-five raised hands. So with that, let me restate what we're voting on. We have a motion to amend the recommended FY twenty-three school department budget. So the FY twenty-three new budget would be fifty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. And that to meet set appropriation, the sum of two fifty-two million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars would be raised from the tax levy. Pardon me, let me just check my math here. Something doesn't look right for my town clerk. Let me just be right back. Let me just be right back and make sure I got this right for you. Thank you. Thank you, folks. I was just conferring with our Warrant Committee clerk and the town administrator that we had the numbers right. So the the motion would, this would read recommended that the town appropriate the amounts for fiscal year '23 of $52,925,786, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $52,335,978 be raised from the tax levy and $589,808 be appropriated from funds, et cetera. So we're not voting on that budget right now. We're voting on the motion to amend down to the numbers you see on your screen, just so everyone's clear. So with that, this would require a majority vote. If we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? Thank you. We can mute. Okay, you can put up the results. The motion fails with 26 yes votes at 11%, 190 no votes at 85% and nine abstentions at 4%. With that, we will now return debate back to the article as printed and of the recommendation as printed and unchanged in the warrant. And I will start to recognize, and by the way, almost everyone that spoke spoke under the motion, so we'll reset the count to zero for speakers tonight. So while is a long list, I'll start with Mr. Fundling. Mr. Fundling, you're recognized. By the way, I'm going to pause for a minute. We've got a member that's having a technical problem. So ma'am, I don't want to necessarily call you out, but did you want to try dialing in by? Let me talk to my team to see if if you're voting problem. We can resolve this by phone. By the way, let me just wait for the roll call vote for a second. The town clerk tells me we have 19 hands raised. We have 29 hands raised now. Okay. Just so everyone knows, this will probably take, Madam Clerk, what's this taken in the past to do this? Half hour, 45 minutes. Okay. Meanwhile, while we're doing that, I see two people that said they didn't get the voting prompt. Folks, I will talk to our team while the clerk starts executing the roll call vote because we have had 25 raised hands per our modified town meeting rules. So Madam Clerk, do you want to come up to the podium? Can you do it from there? That'd be fine. Yes, folks, we'll lower your hands, and we're now going to, you'll have your name called out live by the town clerk in alphabetical order.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to start with the in alphabetical order. When I state your name, please say yes, no, or abstain. I will call everybody's name whether we have you in attendance or not. Diane DeTulio Agostino. I'm sorry, hold on, please.
Good evening, good evening, evening, everybody. Zoom administrator here. What we're going to do to take this roll call vote, we're going to unmute everyone in the attendees pool. Please keep your phone or computer on mute until the town clerk calls you, at which point, please unmute yourself and state which way you will vote on this question. So we'll just take a minute to allow everyone to talk, and then we'll start going through the roll call. Thank you very much. Hey, folks, let me just restate because we haven't done a roll call on on Zoom before. So what you're doing is we're going to call your names out, but let me back up. The town clerk is going to call the name of every single elected town meeting member, whether you're here or not. And we're going to ask you to say, yes, you're in favor of the motion to amend, or no, you're opposed to the motion to amend, or you abstain from the motion to amend. The way we're going to do that is the Zoom administrator is going to unmute all the phones, which means that we don't have to search for your name. But if you would leave your phone muted until the town clerk calls you, then just click your unmute, answer the question, aye, nay, or abstain, and then please mute your phone again, and then we will record on going forward. And by the way, some members asked a question. Do we think people were confused about raising their hands? The numbers kept climbing. We got to 40 hands raised, well beyond the 25. I think the members understood they were calling for a vote to a roll call vote on the motion to amend.
I'm not.
I think I've answered everyone's questions. With that, Madam Clerk, want to start? I'm sorry, okay. Ms. Warrant Committee Clerk, could you put the amended article back up, please? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the article's up. Let's go, Madam Clerk.
Okay, good evening. In addition to the elected town meeting members, ex officios will also be called and asked to vote.
What?
I I will repeat the name twice. If you do not respond, I do not go back. First person, Diane DeTulio Agostino. Please unmute yourself and give your response. Diane Agostino, can you please unmute yourself and respond either yes, no, or abstain?
So apparently, if you don't raise your hand, that unmute button does not pop up. I voted no, and I was mistakenly counted as a hand raised. Thank you.
So to be clear, you are voting yes or no?
No. And be sure that people know they have to raise their hand for the unmute to come up.
Thank you. Okay, I was just informed by the administrator of Zoom, you do not have to raise your hand. It's that the Zoom administrators are trying to unmute people. So you will have the ability to unmute yourself without raising your hand. Next person, Ellen F. Ahern. Please unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Please unmute yourself. Nicholas J. Ahern, please unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Deborah J. Alsubai, please unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain.
No.
April A. Anderson, please unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain.
No.
George A. Asher, please unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Ruth Potopoulos, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Ruth Potopoulos, please vote, unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Okay. George L. Barrett, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
William E. Bennett, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
Yes.
Elaine Janet Benson, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Alexis P. Bergeron, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Richard J. Bowler, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Erin G. Bradley, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Michael Joseph Brady, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Michael R. Brown, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Gregory T. Buchanan, please unmute yourself. Excuse me, who's ever speaking?
Years ago, we absolutely had no breakdown.
Ms. Agostino, excuse me, Ms. Agostino, can you mute yourself, please? Sorry for that disruption. The next person, please, Gregory T. Buchanan. Can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Gregory T. Buchanan, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Thomas M. Bukke, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain.
That's Tomas Burkow? No.
Thank you. Sorry for the mispronunciation.
No worries. Thank you, Ms. Gal.
Brian J. Burns, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Unmute.
Jean L. Burns, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Thank you. Caroline A. Cahill, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Thomas A. Caldwell, please unmute to vote, unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Thomas M. Callahan, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Thank you. Regina Patrice Campbell Malone, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, and abstain.
No.
Thank you. Michelle Elf Cadoza, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Michelle F. Cadoza. Margaret E. Corrells, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Elizabeth M. Carroll, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Gail Long Cavelo, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Rachel D. Chikini, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
Abstain.
Ronald Chikini, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
Abstain.
Joseph W. Chamberlain, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Michael Chinman, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Anthony J. Chikello, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Stephen M. Sidlavich, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Stephen M. Sidlavich, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, it's showing that.
Who's ever unmuted themselves, please mute yourself. Next person, Edward F. Clark III, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Edward. Again, Edward F. Clark, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Moving on, Jill Eden Clark, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
John L. Cochrane, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain.
Abstain.
Diane M. Coligan, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Diane M. Coligan, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Melinda A. Collins, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Webster A. Collins, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Webster A. Collins, could you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Abstain.
Kathleen M. Conlon, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Frederick E. Connolly Jr., please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Frederick E. Connolly Jr., please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Laurie A. Connolly, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Maureen Melody Connors, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Kimberly Larissa Conroy, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Teresa H. Cook, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Teresa H. Cook, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
James P. Coyle, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, James P. Coyle, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. James A. Coin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, James A. Coin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. S. Elaine Craighead, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Hyacinth Critchlow, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you. Brian M. Cronin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Marita Manning Cronin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Marita Manning Cronin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Joseph Curly, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Joseph Curly, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Moving on. Joseph H. Curran, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Joseph H. Curran, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Moving on, Thomas E. Curran, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. Winston Daly, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Thank you. Andrew J. Damato, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Kevin F. Danbro, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Kevin F. Danbro, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Michael D. Dennehy, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Rena M. Dennehy, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Rena M. Dennehy, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Ellen M. Denoyah, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Michael Dermody, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Frances X. Desmond, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Thank you. Megan Patricia Dietrich, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
David L. Dobrand, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Paul P. Dougherty, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Kevin C. Donahue, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Kevin P. Donahue, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Arthur J. Doyle, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Philip James Driscoll, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
William J. Driscoll Jr., please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Representative William J. Driscoll Jr., please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Next person, Sheila M. Dumphy, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
I'm going to apologize before I pronounce your name, Mr. Ebon. If you could please unmute yourself and state whether it's yes, no, or abstain. Again.
No.
Thank you, and I apologize for not being able to pronounce your first name. Brant Ryan Elliott, please unmute yourself and say yes, no, and abstain.
No.
Catherine A. Fagan, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Lisa Ann Fahey, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Michael S. Fahey, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Sean P. Fahey, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
Nope.
Sean P. Fallon, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Sean P. Fallon, please unmute yourself, yes, no, or abstain. Scott F. Farrell, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Scott F. Farrell, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Deborah Marcia Felton, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Carolyn A. B. Ferguson, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Carolyn A. B. Ferguson. Please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. James M. Finnegan, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
John R. Flakes, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
John W. Fuckarelli, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, John W. Fuckarelli, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Patricia Fuckarelli, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Brian G. Foster, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Vanessa Johnson Foster, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Karen L. Friedman Hannah, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Jay Fundling, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Brian W. Furz, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Tamika Downs Gagni, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Daniel J. Gallery, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Daniel J. Gallery, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Joan L. Gankowski, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Brian R. Gilmore, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
Abstain. Sorry about this. This is Steve Sidlavich. I sort of messed up because I'm not sure what I was doing. But I wanted to vote no on this vote, and I didn't know if I was recorded earlier.
You were not recorded earlier, Mr. Sidlavich. I will come back and you can cast your vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for that interruption. Meredith M. Hall, please cast your vote yes, no, or abstain by unmuting yourself.
No.
Thank you. Kevin Shay Hardy, please cast your vote by unmuting yourself, yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Nora Harrington, please unmute yourself and vote either yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Christopher R. Hart, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Paul Sutton Hayes, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Shannon Lee Hagerty, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Ruth A. Hyde, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Alexandra Rofo Higgins, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Alexandra Rofo Higgins, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain. Christine R. Hodlin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
E. Pale Hollingsworth, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Douglas S. Hunt, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Douglas Hind, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, and abstain.
No.
Eugene P. Erwin III, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Eugene P. Erwin.
Yes.
Thank you. Janet J. Erwin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Janet J. Erwin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Ravi J. Jane, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Beatrice James Cockrell, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Beatrice James Cockrell, please unmute yourself. Thank you. Larry Johnson, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Scott D. Johnson, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Scott D. Johnson, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Kathar Joseph, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
I'm sorry, if that was Kathar Joseph, please respond again and vote yes, no, or abstain.
One final call. There was an answer when I called Kathar Joseph. I don't know if that was somebody in error. But Kathar Joseph, if you are on the line, please respond with a yes, no, or abstain. Julie Joyce, please unmute, vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Mary E. Keely, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Claire F. Keating, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Kevin G. Keating, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Stephen M. Kelleher, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Brian T. Kelly, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
Margaret A. Kelly, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain. Again, Margaret A. Kelly, please unmute yourself and answer yes, no, or abstain. Mary E. Kelly, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain.
No.
No.
Oh. I had two answers. Was one Margaret and one Mary? I'm going to say the two names again. Margaret A. Kelly, could you respond with a yes, no, or abstain? Mary E. Kelly, could you respond with a yes or a no or abstain?
No.
Thank you. Michael E. Kelly, could you respond by unmuting yourself with a yes, no, or abstain? Michael E. Kelly, could you unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain? Robert J. Kelly, could you unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain? Robert J. Kelly, could you unmute yourself and state yes, no, or abstain? Dennis F. Cohane, could you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Dennis F. Cohane, could you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? John C. Cohane, could you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, John C. Cohane, could you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Timothy S. Cannon, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Timothy S. Cannon, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Timothy. I'm sorry. Laura A. Kessler, could you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Thank you. John Albert Cannon, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Thank you. Susan A. Cannon, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Virginia M. Donahue King, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Caroline A. Cincella, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Susan Coke Weser, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Kristen G. Cosiel, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Kristen G. Cosiel, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? I'm sorry, there's somebody on the line that hasn't unmuted themselves? Don't know who it is, but if you could mute yourself? Hello? Somebody is on the line who hasn't unmuted, who hasn't muted themselves? Sorry for that interruption. Kristen G. Cosiel, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Kristen A. A. Lacas, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
George A. Lambert, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Branch Broderick Lane, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Abstain.
Jean M. Lang, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Kathleen Ryan Lavery, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Kathleen Ryan Lavery, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Zachary K. Lazah, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Georgia Lee, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Andres J. Lessing, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Jamie Lee Lavash, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Robert C. Lavash, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Robert C. Lavash, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Catherine Levesque, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Catherine Levesque, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Sarah Lovely, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Carl D. Lund Green, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Miriam R. Lund Green, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Deborah Ann, thank you. Deborah Ann Lynch, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Sarah A. Mabel Skilman, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Laurie A. McIntosh, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Laurie A. McIntosh, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Scott McKay, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Michael Mahalcheck, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Regina K. Malley, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Harriet Manning, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, oh, thank you. Harriet, that was you. I'm just confirming that you said no. Great, thank you. Barbara C. Martin, can you confirm that? I'm sorry, can you unmute yourself and confirm your vote as a yes, no, or abstain? Again, Barbara Martin?
No.
Thank you. I'm just going to hold you for a second.
I'm going to take him just down the street.
There's somebody unmuted talking about walking the dog. My God, what a joke.
Emily R. Martin, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Emily R. Martin, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Mary C. Martin, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Mary C. Martin, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? I did hear after, when I started saying Mary, was there another speaker who was confirming their response?
Yes, my, I was muted by the host and had to find the unmute. This is Emily Martin. I voted no.
Thank you. If you could mute yourself. People could just bear with me for a moment. I'm going to put you on mute. Thank you for your patience. Genevieve Neely Martland, would you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Philip S. Matthews, would you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Scott Matthews, would you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Mary E. Kelly May, would you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
James D. McGauley, would you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, James D. McGauley, will you please unmute yourself?
No.
Colleen M. McCarthy, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Joanna K. McCarthy, would you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Michael Saunders McCarthy, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Veronica J. McCarthy, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Abstain?
Angela McConney Shepers, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Angela McConney Shepers, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Whoever hasn't muted themselves, could you please mute themselves, please? Anthony Keith McDermott, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Anthony Keith McDermott, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Joseph P. McGetrick, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Marion V. McGetrick, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Lee Michael McLean, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Terrence M. McNeele, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Kevin J. Mern, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Danielle Anne Mellett, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Deborah A. Milbauer, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Joseph R. Madongo Jr., please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Beth E. Molna, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Frances C. Morrissey, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No. No.
Thank you. Jamie L. Mulligan, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
This is so silly. No.
I'm sorry, who?
Jamie Mulligan, this is so silly. No.
James E. Mulligan, please unmute yourself and vote yes or no?
No.
Peter A. Mullin, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Michael Malvi, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Michael Malvi, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain? Michael Charles Muncie, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Ann L. Murphy, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, and abstain. Mrs. Murphy has notified us that she will respond in the in the chat room, and I will confirm at the end as to what her response was. Joseph F. Murphy, please indicate yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Philip D. Murphy, please unmute yourself and indicate yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Brandon K. Musto, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Michael Musto, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Roxanne F. Musto, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Roxanne Musto, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Thank you. Tato R. Moosa, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
W. Paul Needham, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Richard B. Neely, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Mary B. Noble, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Mary B. Noble, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, and abstain? Peter C. Obersheimer, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Peter C. Obersheimer, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Catherine Rohan O'Brien, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Robert G. O'Brien, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Adam J. Oaks, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Elizabeth A. O'Connor, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Thomas P. O'Connor, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Thomas P. O'Connor, please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain? Mary Jane O'Doherty, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Yes.
Kathleen M. O'Donnell, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Brian P. O'Halloran, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Brian P. O'Halloran, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Stephanie S. O'Keefe, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Margaret T. Oldfield, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Yes.
Sean Patrick O'Rourke, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Ellen D. O'Toole, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Ellen D. O'Toole, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Michael O'Toole, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Michael O'Toole, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Rebecca M. Padara, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Megan E. Pallai, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Thomas C. Palmer, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Alexandra Panarese, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? I'm sorry, Ms. Panarese, can you please repeat that? No. Thank you. Joseph A. Palavecchio, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Glenn H. Pavlichek, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Stephen J. Pender, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Michael J. Perron, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Maureen Cronin Peterson, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
James C. Potter, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Kathleen A. Potter, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Robert E. Powers Jr., can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Rachel Pozo, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
James Anthony Quinn, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Joseph M. Redden, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Michael B. Redden, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Jamie Marie Reddicks, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
C. Robert Reitz, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Rachel Ricadella, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Yes.
Laura T. Richards, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Laura T. Richards, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Mary Wright, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Mary Elizabeth Bright, could you please unmute yourself, vote yes, no, or abstain? Stephen H. Rhines, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Amy F. Robbins, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Kathy Rodriguez, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Zadie B. Rose, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Ada Rose Marin, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Beverly Ross Denny, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Megan Russell, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Megan Russell, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? William T. Bruzzo, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, William T. Bruzzo, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? C. Forbes Sergeant III, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Deborah Savona, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Keith E. Schlight, I'm going to crucify your name and I apologize. Schleitzer, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Keith E. Schleitzer, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Douglas B. Skyback, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Jacqueline Scott, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Jacqueline Scott, can you unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Amanda Thank you. Amanda H. Serio, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Mary E. Shapiro, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Jennifer L. Shea, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Jennifer L. Shea, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Richard W. Shea, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Abstain.
Richard J. Shea, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Abstain.
John E. Sheldon Jr., can you please unmute yourselves and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Linda Lee Sheridan, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Linda Lee Sheridan, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Ronald T. Sia, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Rebecca L. Simons, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Rebecca L. Simons, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Joseph G. Sloan, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Priscilla Hayden Sloan, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Catherine W. Smith, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Jennifer Brennan Smith, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Pony Stackpool, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
This is political theater. I abstain.
And can you repeat your name again? Pony Stackpool, did you, can you confirm that you are abstaining? Again, Pony Stackpool?
Yes, I am abstaining. As I said, it is political theater.
Christine M. Stanton, can you please respond by unmute yourself in saying yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Thomas W. Stanton, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Thomas W. Stanton, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Laurie R. Stillman, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Carol Stalker, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Ellen Stodden, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Robert C. Sweeney, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Denny Swenson, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Renisha Silva Talbot, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Renisha Silva Talbot, can you unmute yourself? Nicholas J. Tagney, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Nicholas J. Tagney, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Jason Touches, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, and abstain? Again, Jason Touches, I believe that's the correct pronunciation, T-A-U-C-H-E-S. Please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Kayanne Salise Thornton, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Kayanne Salise Thornton, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Walter F. Timmeltie, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Walter F. Timmeltie, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? I believe Mr. Senator Timmeltie is in the chat. And he is
No.
No. Oh, thank you.
No. Thank you.
Cheryl Friedman Tagayas, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
George E. Tagayas, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Christopher J. Trakas, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Darnell Turner, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Darnell J. S. Turner, please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Sheila Egan Varela, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Sheila Egan Varela, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Anima Vargis, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Michael Patrick Vaughn, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Michael Patrick Vaughn, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Paul F. Vaughn, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Yes.
Leroy J. Walker, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Yes. Um, no, sorry.
To confirm, Mr. Walker, it is a no.
It is a no, sorry.
Thank you. Janice R. Wallace, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Brian M. Walsh, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Linda Watson, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Richard Gerard Wells Jr., will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
Capital N, capital O.
Thank you. Elizabeth R. White, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Elizabeth R. White, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Carrie A. White, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Carrie A. White, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? William H. White Jr., will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? William H. White Jr., can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Judith M. White Orlando, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Alexander Whitestein, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Leslie R. Will, will you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Jennifer Writington, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Again, Jennifer Writington, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain? Michael F. Zulis, can you please unmute yourself and vote yes, no, or abstain?
No.
Thank you. So, I understand that we do have some people who responded in the chat room with their responses. I'm going to review them with some of the staff here, and I will get back to you. However, before I close this, is there anybody's name that I did not call that would like to give a response? Please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Mary Noble, will you please unmute yourself and give your response?
No.
Thank you, Mrs. Noble. Darnell Turner, will you please unmute yourself and tell us your response?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Steven Sidlavinch, would you please unmute yourself and give us your response?
No.
Okay, I see no more people with their hands raised, which will move us to the chat, and I will come back with the responses of that. Please hold. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you.
The following people responded in the chat, and I would like you to respond again, either verbally or in the chat. I have Joseph Curran. Could you please confirm that you are a no vote? Again, Joseph Curran, could you please confirm you are a no vote? If you aren't able to speak, could you please type it in the Q and A? Again, Joseph Curran. If you do not respond to this, we will not be counting a vote. Next person, Rena Dennehy, could you please confirm you are a yes vote? You can either do it by unmuting yourself, or in the chat by responding yes. Okay? yes. Okay? Okay, seeing no response from Ms. Dennehy, I'm moving on. Daniel Gallery, can you please respond either verbally? Oh, I'm sorry. Rena Dennehy is a yes vote. Daniel Gallery is a yes vote? I'm sorry. Daniel Gallery is a no vote. Laurie McIntosh, I have as a no vote. If you could confirm, Ms. McIntosh, that you are indeed a no vote? Miss Gallery, Ms. McIntosh did confirm she is a no vote via the Q and A. Robert Kelly indicated he is a no vote in the Q and A. Could you please indicate in the Q and A if you are a no and confirm? Mr. Kelly did confirm. Ruth Potopoulos confirmed she is a no vote. Please confirm that you are indeed a no vote. Again, Ruth Potopoulos, thank you. Ruth Potopoulos did confirm she is a no vote. Kathleen Lavery, if you could confirm that you are a no vote? Thank you, Kathleen. Kathleen Lavery confirms that she is a no vote. William Russo, please confirm that you are a no vote. Mr. Russo has confirmed that he is a no vote. Nicholas Tagney, please confirm you are a no vote. Mr. Tagney has confirmed that he is a no vote. Elizabeth White, please confirm that you are a no vote. Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. White confirmed she is a no vote. And the last person that I have is Janet Irwin. Please confirm you are a yes vote. Mrs. Irwin did confirm she is a yes vote. Um, I did see that, oh, somebody questioned if Mr. Curran had voted already. Um, he had voted in the Q and A, and we are recording their actual votes. Okay, before I, um, sign off, I would like to give members the opportunity, is there any member that has not voted that would like to vote? Um, I do see Mr. Curran's hand raised. A Mr. Joseph Curran? Mr. Curran?
No.
I did have you recorded. Yep, you had voted in the Q and A. Thank you. And, Mr. Moderator, I believe that confirms everybody. Um, I will be able to give you a tally, but not currently at this moment, but I will give the tally tomorrow.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the roll call vote. Uh, the town clerk informs me that, uh, she and this assistant both recorded, uh, the individual votes. They'll have to tally them up, uh, in the morning, and they can give us a report, uh, tomorrow morning. At this point, that it's, uh, ten fifty-five, I'll entertain a motion to recess this article until, uh, Tuesday night, uh, January, pardon, this, uh, June, uh, fourteenth at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Mr. Walsh so moves, uh, Mr. Caldwell seconds. Uh, if we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion to recess, uh, before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All standing, please vote abstain. And on the phones, we can unmute. On the phones, uh, in favor of voting to recess, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, we can mute. And put up the results. Uh, the eyes carry one hundred and sixty-nine, uh, yeses at ninety percent, eighteen nos at ten percent, and one abstention at one percent. Um, thank you, and, uh, we will, uh, um, report back the results and answer questions about the roll call tomorrow, Tuesday, starting at seven thirty. Uh, thank you and good night. I declare a simple recess.